I open the extraordinary council meeting on the sixth of February twenty twenty four at seven oh five P M. Good evening, councillors. I will now ask councillor Nielsen to read the acknowledgement.
I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Biggal and the Gadigal peoples who occupy the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders, past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Thank you, and I'll ask councillor Luxford to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia.
I'll now call for apologies and any leaves of absences. There, I've received a request from councillor Parker to attend tonight's meeting by audiovisual link. Can I please have someone move a motion as follows, the request from councillor Parker? To attend extraordinary meeting of council on the thirty of October twenty twenty four, sorry, on the sixth of February twenty twenty four, by audiovisual link be approved, moved by councillor D'Souza, seconded by councillor Luxford. Let it be noted that councillor Parker is unable to attend in person. Are there any declarations of pecuniary or non pecuniary interests? And we have no addresses of council to council by members of the public. I'll now read the chairperson's announcement and privacy warning. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five point two five to five point two three of council's code of meeting practice. Audio video recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio video recorder without the express authority of council. And yet, we have no speakers tonight. We will move straight on to the business. We'll now move to Director City Planning Report, CP one slash twenty four. Results of the community consultation on continuing Randwick's environmental levy, special rate variation on a permanent basis and adoption of the long term financial plan twenty twenty three to twenty thirty three. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Olive, seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Olive.
Yes, I'd like to move the this item as per the recommendation on the business papers. And I will take that as read by everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank council comms for the exemplary job they did in in getting out all the information to residents around this particular issue and collating the data for survey telephone and other means of communicating with our residents. And I think that they did a tremendous job. And I think that in the information provided, we could see all the marvelous things that the environment levy has done. And if you turn on the business papers to what is it, page fourteen and fifteen, it just tells you what kind of things the environment levy will be looking at affording Randwick to have in the future. And but I wanted to go to narrow my focus a bit more to something specific. I was at the South Marubur Surf Club the other day for the sports person's luncheon. I just looked over their balcony at the walkway at the Malabar Headland, the new walkway, which is, well, the walkway that had been built there. And I thought, I've never actually done that. When I was younger, I lived in Chifley. I used to go through the rifle range and through the hole in the fence and go to Marubur Beach. But I'd never actually been able to go out to the eastern edge and see what it's like. And so I thought, the next day, I'd take a nice little jog at it, just at a leisurely pace, and go out there, and it is spectacularly beautiful. And the fact that you've got this walkway, that a lot of other people who are going back and forward, they were able to do this and see the pristine environment. I didn't realise that there was a cove there. And this is something that the environment levy has been able to afford us and something which makes our community better for it. And I think there are all sorts of ways in which the environment levy achieves this aim. And I know I spoke to someone, I went to the Coogee Surf Club, and someone was there was saying, well, we've got to get the environment levy through. Because, I mean, the beaches rely on having been clean. And us affording grease pollutant traps and having stormwater harvesting is a big consideration for this. And something that residents thank us for. And so, I mean, I'll just add one other thing. The other day I was in a park and sat under a tree, and it was so hot, and I was so grateful for the shade. And we have to get our target of forty percent tree canopy by twenty forty over the line. And I think this is one way that we can do that. And so that's why I would encourage you all to support this particular motion.
Thank you, councillor Olive. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, life is best when you build bridges between people rather than walls. Tonight by actions councillors, we have a chance to build bridges, to mend fences and to protect our environment through the environmental levy. We have a chance to continue the good work such as the coastal walkway, as Michael mentioned, water harvesting, environmental education programmes, workshops and festivals. Environmental levy also funds other environmental initiatives such as gross pollutant traps, which improves water quality, again, as Michael mentioned. Gross pollutant traps, which improves water quality runoff at our beaches. Therefore, there should be little debate on this matter, as this should not be a time of bitterness and division, but a time to heal. Needless to say, a vote against this levy would be socially self destructive and self defeating for us and our residents. We all want a world based on caring for each other and the planet, moving swiftly to a post carbon future, upholding indigenous rights and pursuing economic justice for everyone. Here is a great opportunity to do just that through this levy, to care for our planet and swiftly move to a post carbon future. It is not the job of one person or one political party, the Greens, to advocate on environmental issues. This noble task belongs to all of us. No one group should claim a monopoly on making policy on the environment or protecting our planet. That is a collective responsibility. And we all have a duty of care to do the right thing and protect and save our planet for this and the next generations. This concept is enshrined in environmental law and the principle of intergenerational equity. Intergenerational equity is a concept that says humans hold the natural and cultural environment of the earth in common, both with other members of the present generation and with other generations, past and future. It means that we inherit the earth from previous generations and have an obligation to pass it on in reasonable condition to future generations. Needless to say, this request to fund the environment levy is not based on falsehood and arrogance. It is not devoid of any moral or legal value. Climate change, as we know, friends, is real. We've all seen and felt the effects of climate change, the heavy rains, the drought, the landslides, the tsunamis, the cyclones and other unexplained catastrophic climatic events. My request admittedly sounds self interested, but I can assure you it promotes the best interests of the community. We both in Randwick City, we have a sense of community, that we are inclusive and accepting of all. This levy, my friends, does just that. With all its hopes and all its boasts, it helps build that sense of community. It will achieve great things for the residents of Randwick. Since I lost the majority in this council, I felt, I won't go into all that today, but in saying all that, I would encourage everyone to support this particular motion and the environmental levy, which now will be incorporated. It wouldn't be something we'll have to vote on at future meetings. It'll be something that'll be incorporated and it'll become part of the culture and part of the budgets for future generations. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Councillor Parker.
I just wanted to confirm that the meeting can hear me. Is that correct? Thank you very much, Mr. Ladd.
So councillor Parker, you don't wish to speak? Okay, thanks for taking your hand down. Councillor Hay.
I'd like to move an amendment if Mr. Kelly could bring up an email I just sent. Apologies, that only just came through recently. I'll start speaking. On Christmas Eve about six weeks ago, Randwick City was hit with a deluge of rain. Worst affected was Hastings Avenue, Chifley, where the road was flooded to a depth of one point two metres. Thankfully, no life was lost. However, five cars were swept away. What's surprising isn't that the rainfall happened, but that it will take years to address adequately. We will likely need to duplicate about one and a half kilometres of pipe, which could cost in the range of four to five million dollars to fix. Unfortunately, this means it might never happen or take a very long time. Our annual budget in stormwater, which is applied to design and major works, is only about one and a half million dollars every year. And of course, that's for the entirety of Randwick City. In Central Ward in Marubur Beach, there's a shovel ready project which has a two million dollar price tag. It will alleviate some flooding that affects a number of homes on Bond Street and the intersection of Bonavista. But again, with only one and a half million dollars to look after the entirety of Randwick City, how can we expect a two million dollar project to get off the ground in the near future? In East Ward, we have a problem particularly on Evelyn Street, where the water falls so quickly onto such a steep road that it falls onto Malabar Road, creating a major safety hazard. And of course, we have the Coogee and Flurry Flood Study, which is going to have a wide range of recommendations. And will we be able to adequately address them? The science is clear. Australia is heading into a lat ninyah weather pattern. The amount of rain that falls will be high, and where it falls is just a matter of luck. But whether we can do something about that with serious infrastructure upgrades is something we can discuss tonight. Let's say flood does come. Do we want to say that we had an opportunity to spend four and a half million dollars on stormwater or on education? Do we want to say that we spent that money on community gardens, on cycleways or on environmental artwork? We have the power to allocate twenty million dollars over the next five years to stormwater aversion and to allow our stormwater engineers to pick the low hanging fruit that exists and can make a real difference in people's lives. Of course, the other side to this is that we are just averting crisis. We're also saving people money. I'm inundated with letters from people in Kensington and Kingsford who have had their flood insurance triple over the past two years. This is, of course, because there has been some very expensive flooding in Lismore in twenty two, but also, as I said, the lat ninyah weather pattern for the next few years, increased rain. Now, generally, I don't want to raise taxes on people in the middle of a cost of living crisis, but this will save money on insurance and save us money in the future on a crisis. Through the rest of the amendment, I'm trying to I'm not trying to touch tree planting or waste avoidance, and I'm not trying to touch the incentives that save residents money. This is about cutting the luxuries and putting it towards essential services. Also, there's an amendment at the top which will remove it from a permanent levy to a ten year levy and a point F that allows us in five years' time to come back, reassess and determine what the plans should be for the future. Thank you very much.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, councillor burst. The environmental levy, which is actually, is really a tax, was originally introduced to provide funding for major environmental project works. Most of our large ticket items are now complete, and this levy tax is now morphed into other fringe areas. Randwick, New South Wales, Australia is in the grip of a cost of living crisis. Pensioners, elderly and many in our community are struggling to put a roof over their heads, find a bed to sleep in, put food on the table and find clothing. And they are skimping and cutting their budgets to survive and pay basic bills. Many are going without cooling in summer and no heating in winter. If our community have to survive on a very tight budget and miss out on basic items, our council needs to tighten its environmental tax budget to ensure we don't add any additional burdens with a permanent environmental tax. Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Can I just ask a question about process here? Because I understand we've gone out to consultation, which was a prerequisite for what we then sent to IPART. If that was amended, would we then have to go back out to consultation? Because this is obviously not what we consulted on.
Through to the general manager.
Thinking about a minute, no, council, as per this proposed amendment, is saying that there'd be an increase in the environmental levy by, well, it raises by eleven point six seven percent. So that's what IPART's interested in, that we actually told the community there'd be an increase in the rates. It's a matter for council, which projects the council wishes to do, even though we went out and consulted on particular projects.
Councillor Chapel.
I'd just like to speak briefly against the amendment. I just think we've gone through a whole process where we have a plan for where this money is going to be spent, based on the expert advice from council staff. And I think changing that on the floor of council without a consistent, like without a coherent plan, just to put that into stormwater and drainage, while I understand there may be a need for stormwater and drainage, just fails to deliver on what this is. I think stormwater and drainage is core council function. And if there is such a significant issue as councillor Hay identifies, I would assume that council officers would bring to us and say, actually, we really need to do something about stormwater and drainage, and here is the plan. I do trust them to do that. And I would just say, in terms of cutting costs, I mean, things like active transport, one of the reasons my partner and I ride to work is because it costs six dollars each way on public transport. And costs like that really bank up when you've got kids and you're paying for after school care and all of these kinds of things. So the idea that all of these other things are not actually saving people money, I think is just unrealistic and untrue and really devalues the work done by the sustainability staff to bring people knowledge and skills and information and programmes that are really relevant and important to them.
Thank you, councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I cannot support the amendment. The reasons behind why I don't support the amendment relate particularly to point E in terms of the change of the programme of work, in particular the estimates in the five year plan and the variations around that. While I actually do as an individual support more thorough and considered reflection on the prioritisation of the usage of the environment levy, I don't think that that is something which we should immediately do on the fly. I'm allocating the lion's share to one particular component of which I totally acknowledge is very meritorious. But I think it should be undertaken at least consideration of that in a much more thoughtful and considered manner rather than amendment from the floor. I don't fault councillor Hayes' motivations whatsoever in moving it, but I do think that it is rather hasty and a more appropriate way in which council should go about its longer term prioritisation of the levies initially by further consideration and recommendation by staff, but also a more comprehensive process, whether or not that be through extensive councillor briefings and workshops and then a discussion hopefully via a staff report on the council agenda where members of the public will be able to themselves contribute to that. That will take time. We are under clear time pressure in relation to requesting from IPART. The other component that I also take objection to is changing the period from a permanent levy to a ten year levy. It essentially, while ten years is a significant period of time, does build in a large degree of risk in terms of Randwick Council's long term financial position. And the fact of the matter is, we've had the environment levy for twenty years. It really has been permanent at that point, except the fact that every five years we expose ourselves to pretty considerable risk. I don't think anyone in the community would be surprised after twenty years that we're making the levy permanent there after repeated decisions to that effect. So it is for those reasons I do not support the amendment, but I do encourage a broader conversation at a more appropriate time and a better forum for that.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd just like to start with a question to the relevant officer. How much is the levy, I've got the answer, but how much is the levy for twenty three twenty four? The Telegraph have given us a figure. I'm happy to read it out. You can confirm it. It's just a hundred and one dollars for twenty three twenty four financially, is that right?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's the average rate. Thank you.
Thank you. So I won't support this amendment, not because it's a bad amendment, but I too don't want, as councillor Bill mentioned, I don't like taxes, I don't need increases, these are difficult times. But after that answer, it just costs one dollar ninety five per week to save our planet, to save our environment. This levy costs us one dollar ninety five a week. A cup of coffee now costs about three fifty, or if you're lucky, most of them are five dollars. So a dollar ninety five is nothing. This is to save our planet. This is to invest in the future, our future and the future of our children. As I said before, there should be little reason for debate or division. This is something, it's a gift. It's about our future. Let's all support. I won't support the amendment, but let's support the initial motion. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. No further speakers.
And I think changing that on the floor of council without a consistent, like without a coherent plan just to put that into stormwater and drainage, while I understand there may be a need for stormwater and drainage, just fails to deliver on what this is. I think stormwater and drainage is core council function. And if there is such a significant issue, as councillor Haye identifies, I would assume that council officers would bring to us and say, actually, we really need to do something about stormwater and drainage and here is the plan. I do trust them to do that. And I would just say, in terms of cutting costs, I mean, things like active transport. One of the reasons my partner and I ride to work is because it costs $6 each way on public transport. And costs like that really bank up when you've got kids and you're paying for, you know, after-school care and all of these kinds of things. So the idea that all of these other things are not actually saving people money, I think is just unrealistic and untrue and really devalues the work done by the sustainability staff to bring people knowledge and skills and information and programs that are really relevant and important to them.
Thank you, councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I cannot support the amendment. The reasons behind why I don't support the amendment relate particularly to point E in terms of the change of the programme of work, in particular the estimates in the five-year plan and the variations around that. While I actually do as an individual support more thorough and considered reflection on the prioritisation of the usage of the Environment Levy, I don't think that that is something which we should immediately do on the fly. I'm allocating the lion's share to one particular component of which I totally acknowledge is very meritorious. But I think it should be undertaken at least consideration of that in a much more thoughtful and considered manner rather than amendment from the floor. I don't fault councillor Hayes' motivations whatsoever in moving it, but I do think that it is rather hasty and a more appropriate way in which council should go about its longer-term prioritisation of the levies, initially by further consideration and recommendation by staff, but also a more comprehensive process, whether or not that be through extensive councillor briefings and workshops and then a discussion hopefully via a staff report on the council agenda where members of the public will be able to themselves contribute to that. That will take time. We are under clear time pressure in relation to requesting from IPART. The other component that I also take objection to is changing the period from a permanent levy to a 10-year levy. It essentially, while 10 years is a significant period of time, does build in a large degree of risk in terms of Randwick council's long-term financial position. And the fact of the matter is we've had the Environment Levy for 20 years. It really has been permanent at that point, except the fact that every five years we expose ourselves to pretty considerable risk. I don't think anyone in the community would be surprised after 20 years that we're making the levy permanent there after repeated decisions to that effect. So it is for those reasons I do not support the amendment. But I do encourage a broader conversation at a more appropriate time and a better forum for that.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd just like to start with a question to the relevant officer. How much is the levy? I've got the answer, but how much is the levy for '23, '24? The Telegraph, they've given us a figure, I'm happy to read it out and you can confirm it. It's just $101 for '23, '24 financially, is that right?
Through to the General Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's the average rate. Thank you.
Thank you. So I won't support this amendment, not because it's a bad amendment, but I too don't want, as councillor Bill mentioned, I don't like taxes, I don't need increases. These are difficult topics. But after that answer, it just costs $1.95 per week to save our planet, to save our environment. This levy costs us $1.95 a week. A cup of coffee now costs about $3.50, or if you're lucky, most of them are $5. So $1.95, nothing. This is to save our planet. This is to invest in the future, our future and the future of our children. As I said before, there should be little reason for debate or division. This is something, it's a gift. It's about our future. Let's all support. I won't support the amendment, but let's support the initial motion. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. No further speakers on the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment? No, it's an amendment. There's no. Yeah. All those against? I declare that carried. Lost. We'll now move back to the motion. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Very similar to how it was well elicited by my colleague councillor Burst. Cost of living is a massive issue at the moment. Many ratepayers have seen interest rates rise by 4.25% in the last 21 months and are paying much more for their mortgages. Most people who have mortgages are also paying rates. On top of that, energy and grocery bills have risen quite considerably in the last few years. Inflation is starting to get under control a little bit, but it's still... People are still saying that every time they get their electricity bill and their gas bill, they're too scared to open it. They're spending a lot every time they go to the supermarket. I believe they need some relief. I'd like to also acknowledge in the feedback that in Central Ward in particular, there seems to be a very even spread of respondents compared to other wards. Not quite, there was one ward that had more people that were opposed, but there was only one of those. I attended a Maruba precinct meeting where 95% of the people were against continuation of the Environment Levy. Of those attending, there's probably about 23, 24 people there roughly. Top of the debris left by the stones. I basically, I just think at this particular time when cost of living is such a consideration, we don't really want to put an impulse on people for extra taxes. I do see the need for some of these measures and I believe we can fund them through rates. Like there are some of these measures, GPTs particularly, we can fund through general rates. I do believe in climate change. I believe it's an issue. I do believe the federal level party and the federal coalition, I should say, has the best policy in terms of going nuclear. That's a federal issue, but that's what I think we should be looking at in terms of combating climate change. So I'm against continuing the levy. I'm obviously in the minority, but I'm glad to have my say. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Olive, oh, councillor Chapel.
Sorry, I'd just like briefly to speak in favour of the motion. I'd just like to note first, obviously, this is still subject to IPART, which undertakes consultation and then makes a determination. So this is not the final decision today and there is a bunch of rigor in that process. From what I've read, and I think we've been very well briefed by the sustainability team on the work of the Environmental Levy, part of what this has allowed us to do over the last 20 years is to have it all in Randwick City. So we are known for our environmental outcomes. I know residents really care about this stuff. They talk to us about it all the time. We were so proud to roll out FOGO. We've run a bunch of incredible awards by being really innovative, really leading the way on that stuff. But also, funding it this way means we can fund our surf clubs. It means we can upkeep our sports field. It gives us extra room to do all of the things that all of our people want. And I think that's just really important. And it is, yeah, things like GPT installations, food waste avoidance. I'd say in terms of cost of living, like residents particularly in apartments are the ones who are suffering a lot of the cost of living. A lot of those are renters, but a lot of those people also benefit from the work specifically that is done through this levy. So things like, you know, when you're in an apartment like I am, we spend a lot more time outside because we don't have a backyard. So you're on the coastal walkways, you're going to the environmental education programmes. I did the organic gardening programme before I became a councillor at the Randwick Sustainability Hub and it was one of the most amazing and rewarding things. And I still grow food that I eat because of stuff I know from that programme and it saves me a bunch of money. Likewise, all of the community gardens in our area really rely on the funding from this programme to be supported and to deliver fresh nutritious food in local areas to local communities. They're also building community. Things like EV chargers are making EVs accessible for people who would otherwise maybe not be able to access them, they're able to move around the area. And things like the marine and coastal programme are really essential. They're a really beautiful, amazing and fairly affordable cheap day out during the summer holidays, which I know a lot of the other parents at my school have spoken to me about at length. I've been approached by a lot of people about the programmes funded by this and that alone is enough to say I really think we should support this and keep doing this flagship stuff that Randwick's known for.
Thank you, councillor Chapel. Councillor Sed.
Mayor, and I also am in favour of the Environmental Levy. And I just want to, I'll just put down a few notes that whilst the Environmental Levy vote is about the future, the important is the important to look at the past and to see how far we have travelled. For example, we've won 74 awards for our sustainability and our environmental policies since 2004. And over the last 15 years, investment in stormwater and wastewater reuse has saved council approximately about $15 million in water costs. In 2020, one of the biggest engineering projects in council's history was built with the levy money. The Maruba Stormwater Harvesting Project diverted stormwater from polluting Maruba Beach to being captured, filtered and used to irrigate drink space from Arthurburn Reserve to Maroon Pool and all the public amenities along the way. Not only did this project win awards for its engineering efficiency, but also there was an educational programme designed by council officers that was created to explain its workings and its positive effect on the environment. Council's environmental levy projects ensure sustainable development is all about us seeing the whole picture, such as the critical links between food, water, land and energy. And it's also ensuring that our actions today are consistent with where we want to go tomorrow. Back in 2004, Randwick Council had the good wisdom to decide that it was time to change course and lead the way in following a more sustainable path, a path focused on preserving life, support systems in our area and in turn enhancing wellbeing for future generations. The introduction of the Environment Levy can now rightly be seen as a key stepping stone towards looking to bolster resilience by FIGS, finance, innovation, governance and stakeholders. And at its core, the Environmental Levy has always been about future worth choosing. And tonight's vote is about backing in our commitment to sustainable growth, lasting prosperity for all the local community. But it's important that we remember sustainable development is not a destination, rather it's a dynamic process of adaption, learning and action.
Thank you, councillor Sed. If there are no further speakers, councillor Olive, would you like to close the debate?
I just talked about the sort of community support and the survey and the telephone survey clearly give community support. And I just was looking at the 2019 IPART report and the amount of support that we've got here now is marginally better than the 2019 support from the community. And IPART was congratulating Randwick on that. So I think that, you know, that's another reason to actually support this levy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. If we are now go to a vote, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I declare that carried. Thank you, councillors. Thank you very much, councillors. I declare the meeting closed at 7:37.